So it is seven oh one, I see all the members of the planning board, so I'll call the meeting to order. Um going around, uh Theo Noel.
Here.
Matt Lowry.
Here.
Kevin York.
Here.
And Bill Spalding.
Here.
So all members of the planning board are present. So move to item number two, approval of the meeting minutes from July twenty third, twenty twenty four. Did all the members of the planning board have the ability to review the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Did anyone have any comments? Uh seeing no comments, uh I'll take a roll call vote of the approval of the meeting. Minutes from July twenty third as presented.
Jim, I just point of order, I'll make a motion to accept the.
Apologies, thank you for keeping me honest. Uh so I have a motion from Mr. Spalding, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh so motion by Bill, seconded by Theo, so roll call vote, uh. Ke- Matt Lowry.
Yes.
Kevin York.
Yes.
Theo Noel.
Yes.
And Bill Spalding.
Yes.
And I will be abstaining based on my absence from that meeting. So passes four to zero. Um in that case, uh I think we can move to item number three if the applicant is. Present for the public hearing associated with one fifty four and one fifty eight Salem Street. Uh Attorney McGrath, my understanding is this is, this is yours.
Yes, uh Mr. Chair, it is, and we are all present, ready to uh move forward.
Okay, in that case, uh prior to, prior to uh the presentation, I want to just give an overview. Members of the public who may not be uh familiar with this process, but the subdivision that. Subdivision that's being submitted to us is part of the subdivision control process, which is a statutory process established by. Mass General Law, Chapter forty one, Section eighty one, which gives property owners the right to subdivide land parcels into smaller lots. The planning board has established rules and regulations via the Wakefield Bylaw, Section three twenty, that defines. Design documentation requirements for subdivisions. These rules and requirements are meant to ensure adequate access to all the lots in the subdivision, ensure. Adequate provision for water, sewers, drainage, and other requirements. If subdivision plan conforms with the rules and regulations outlined in these. These rules and regs established by the planning board, then the planning board has to, is obligated to approve the plan. This is not a discretionary permit and is considered a land right. Uh then applicant also has the requ- right to request waivers from the planning board, and if there are certain rules and regs that the applicant would like to not. Uh is looking to for relief to conform to in Section two, three twenty. Waiving requirements is at the sole discretion of the planning board, and is will often trigger conditions as part of the subdivision review and approval process. Uh please note that the approval of subdivision land only allows for the land to be split into separate lots, and if applicant wants to build anything on that lot. That that would, they would need to apply for a building permit, depending on what type of building is being proposed, they may need other discretionary zoning approvals. Such as a special permit through the zoning board appeals. So just a little bit of context for people if they, if you're not aware of the process, uh Attorney McGrath, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as I laid everything out, but. Um that's, that's a good background for pe- for folks who may not be familiar with what we're talking about. Uh and with that, I will turn it over to Attorney McGrath.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, that's an excellent background, thank you very much for setting the table, because very concise and well said and accurate. Um for the record, uh Attorney Brian McGrath with offices at six oh seven North Avenue in Wakefield. Uh with me tonight is uh Rich Williams from Williamson's Barages, which is a site civil engineer on this subdivision application. And also Nick and Rock, Rock O'Leo, uh they are the principals of L and L Development LLC and Wakefield Salem Street LLC. Which are the owners of one fifty four and one fifty eight Salem Street. Which is the subject of this application for a definitive subdivision. I think I'd like to start out by kind of familiarizing the board uh with the layout, if I may share my screen, if that's okay.
Please do so.
Great, thank you. Just see here. Okay, so Rich will, Rich Williams will get into this in a little bit more detail, this is just the rudimentary. Components of the subdivision, uh and some things that I wanted to point out to the board. I'm gonna kind of track you with, with my mouse on the perimeter of the subdivision, starts down here on Salem Street, goes all the way back. Uh and then cuts, comes back around here, and then goes back down to Salem Street with some significant frontage on Salem Street. Um you, you'll notice that this is a split zone lot currently, it's partially in the general residence only district. This piece over here, this, this piece is in the single residence, and the majority. Of Lot three is in the industrial zoning district, so quite uh array of zoning districts that we're dealing with here. Um as you can see, this definitive subdivision plan calls for the creation of four lots. Um the breakdown of those lots is that we anticipate a two-family home on Lot four. Uh a two-family home on Lot one, there already is a legal non-conforming two-family dwelling there. We plan on continuing that and modifying it, so it meets the current setbacks in, as it relates to Lot one. Lot two would have a single-family home, and Lot three is zoned industrial. Uh there's various options for this, as you know, industrial uses, what we're actually uh proposing. At the outset is a multi-family development, we had talked about this site uh before. And we had talked about potentially a, a mid-rise building, apartment building or a garden building. Um in what we deemed more appropriate is um. Uh townhouse homes, which I'll get into the detail of uh in a couple of minutes. Um you can see Nabulus Way, um which comes off of Salem Street. And in their industrial zone, there's a, there's a commercial building here. Uh that is currently for lease, I think there's some historic use here, industrial use, maybe a warehouse or something to that effect. This was, this was, you may recall, was previously before you upbought as a preliminary plan. Which was approved on February twenty seven, two thousand twenty four. Uh and I use the word approved loosely because at, during that preliminary process. There was a robust discussion, there was input from the town engineer and a robust discussion with the planning board. On certain components of this development, that we all agreed that we would again at this uh more detail in the definitive process. Um and you know, refresh your memory on those issues that we discussed, we talked about um. Whether there would need to be a crosswalk on Salem Street to get the sidewalks on the other side of Salem Street. Um you may recall that since Salem Street was, has been recently redone, there are now sidewalks on our side of Salem Street, so. We all decided during the prelimi- prelimi- preliminary process that a cross, crosswalk would not be required. Um at the time, we uh came up with the design, there was a six-inch water main in Salem Street, that is now eight-inch pursuant to. Uh the infrastructure improvements that have taken place out there, so our plans now, uh as requested by the town engineer through the preliminary process includes an eight-inch water main. On our Road A, which is yet to be named. Um we also had a great discussion on sidewalks as it relates to um our roadway. Um and if you go back, um we, you might recall, um going back, um. It was agreed at the outset that we, we were all leaning towards only doing sidewalks on a portion of Lot three and then. In front of two and one and connecting to the sidewalk out here, and foregoing a sidewalk on this side. But perhaps curving the sidewalk around to meet the driveway that will serve Lot four. Uh in lieu of that, we also talked about a general sidewalk contribution to the town. Where the, the proceeds that would be used to put this sidewalk in would be used in, in more appropriate areas in town that would have more benefit. Um but what we've done on our definitive plan at the outset, and as you're aware through this process, there will be modifications. We've shown a sidewalk on both sides, uh pursuant to discussions that we're going to have with the board for this process, we anticipate that we would eliminate it. At some point, but certainly that's up for discussion. Um the roadway width, we have uh brought down to forty feet, uh pursuant to our discussion versus fifty feet. Um and there was discussion with that at the preliminary plan, um I think the board was um. Was um somewhat comfortable with that, but not a hundred percent committed to that uh during the preliminary process because. Um the board wanted to kind of know more what was gonna happen on Lot three to determine, um there was concerns with. Potential parking overflow that could go on to the roadway that was raised by Mr. Lowry on the preliminary plan. And what we discussed was, um is with all of these projects, there could be some back and forth and some conditioning. In that regard, that would allow us all to be comfortable with a, with a forty-foot right-of-way rather than a fifty-foot. Um the, the pavement difference is really no impact, um I think it's like twenty-six feet of pavement. On a um fifty-foot right-of-way and twenty-four on a forty-foot right-of-way, so it's a couple of feet. And actually, if we lose the sidewalk on this side, we can probably widen it, if the board wanted to. Uh keeping the right-of-way forty feet, but increasing the pavement that would, would pretty much match, but that can be a discussion as a working process. Uh as we move forward. Um when we originally presented this uh preliminary plan to the board, we talked about what we planned on doing back here. You'll see it a little bit more on the um definitive plan sheets that Rich Williams will show you. Um and we talked about various options back here, as I mentioned, initially, we talked about a multi-family building. Garden building, maybe a mid-rise, five-story building. Um the density that's allowed on the square footage of Lot three, under our current bylaw via special permit would be fifty-three units. Um that could, could, this lot could accommodate from a density uh perspective under the calculation, whether it could do that. Um practically, I don't know, we, we haven't even studied that, um because what we've decided is what's more appropriate for this. Area, uh for the neighborhood, uh for the look and to fit in is to go with a townhouse style project back here. Um and when we originally talked to your board during the, during the preliminary process, um we talked approximately twenty units. Um as you'll see where we stand now, we anticipate that that number is actually gonna go down to a, a thirteen units. Uh because what we've determined that is that that's what fits geometrically comfortable here. Um and you know, and that will be a process that would take place before the Board of Appeals, which I'll get into some detail on that um in a, in a, in a second. The other thing that was discussed during the preliminary process is, is the board is gonna want a clear delineation of work. Deline- delineation of work line, Mr. Hogan, you had mentioned that, you wanted a full understanding of the, of the um disruption of the lot. And Rich will, you know, he has a um silt line uh on the plan, and he can talk a little bit about that. Uh and then we can provide as much information as the board needs or wants uh in that regard, there has been a stormwater report. That has been submitted, uh that stormwater report takes into account what will be developed on Lot three. Um the other thing I did want to mention, um you might um. Um know at this point that Salem Street has been totally redone, um with new pavement, sidewalks, um. Uh and what we did, we, we, yeah, and kudos to my client, uh clients, they took the initiative. And they have already put all of their utility connections out into Salem Street and have brought them into our property. So this project, besides our curb cut, which is normal, which will blend in. Will not require any disturbance of the uh pristine pavement out on Salem Street. So we will not have to dig into that new pavement that uh was just put down, my clients went through the expense to do that uh in advance. Um as we discussed during the preliminary plan uh process, uh our desire is to work cooperatively with the board. Uh to reasonably address concerns, to work in a cooperative effort to make this a, a good and a responsible pro- uh project. Um I know you received, I think, um some comments from Conservation, um which we will be following a notice of intent. Um as I, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we will require. Uh a special permit process, and you alluded to this, Mr. Chair, at the beginning, um for what we're proposing to be developed on Lot three. Um we've kind of gone back and forth on this and on when that would happen um as a team. Um and you know, what our initial thought was, was that we would get our subdivision approved, and then we would uh file with. Um the um zoning board for our special permit, uh and then perhaps with the Conservation Commission. We rethought that um over the past couple of weeks, and what we're heavily leaning towards now. Is to uh filing for our special permit at this point, our special permits with the Board of Appeals. Um so that that process could happen in a, a parallel fashion with your board. Um our drainage studies, uh they're all based on what we're doing back there. Um and I think it will be helpful for both boards to kind of have input as we move forward. It would be a shame to have a subdivision approved, then go to the zoning board for special permits and have to come back and modify this. Um there has been some history of good working relationships between the boards, and I just think it would be good for transparency, um for. Um working relations, uh for town, uh departmental review. Um for everybody to have a picture of what we're proposing uh in entirety for the project. So my anticipation is, is that we'll be filing in the very near future with the zoning board, uh and. Also with the Conservation Commission, and likely commencing with the zoning board. Um with their process sometimes, sometimes towards the um end of October. Um that will require, um if the board agrees that that's a good approach. Um that will require a, um some extensions um with your board. Um I do want to bring this to your attention out of the gate, because we had a preliminary subdivision plan here. So your time on, your review uh on this goes very quickly. Um it's ninety days from the date that we applied, and the application was July twenty-third. So I believe that, you know, um uh we're gonna, you know, it's gonna, the bell will ring on October twenty-one. That you are, you have a time limit um to um render a decision on this, as you know, if you don't do that. Um then it's constructively automatically approved, we're not looking to put anybody in that position. Um and what we're allowed to do under the statute is to extend the time. Um and uh in, you know, in conjunction with the board, so right out of the gate. You know, realizing what we're gonna be doing with the zoning board and in the time that this is gonna take in conservation. I'll state that we're very ready, willing, and able to extend the date. Um to allow, you know, proper time and proper review uh by everybody for this project. Um so with that said, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, uh and I'm gonna hand it over to Rich, if you would allow that, to. Maybe go into a little bit more detail on the site and um some of the um infrastructure aspects of the project.
Please do.
Rich? Make sure you unmute, Rich, there you go.
Yep, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, um this is just the index sheet, you can give a little bit more context of where the um. Where the project lies. Zoom up a little bit, this is Nabulus Road, Toby Lane, Daniel, and Salem, and this is the, the, the rail bed. Uh here. Um and as Brian went through, um it's a, it's proposed as uh for, for lots. And um the, the first three lots are, are twelve thousand plus square feet each. Um and Lot three is sixty-four thousand um square feet. Um and I'll go back a, a little bit to that. Um this is the existing conditions plan, and I want to describe a little bit about um the drainage pattern at the site and. Uh what, what exists there now, um so uh this is Salem Street and. Um this is the existing two-family house that uh that lies on the property, there is. Um and intermediate property line uh right about here, but this. Uh this house is on the property and uh very close to the property line there. Uh from a topographic standpoint, the uh the land generally slopes. Uh up initially from Salem Street to a high point up in here, and then slopes down. Uh to a lower level down here, there's um. These hatched areas are the steeper uh parts of the site, those are greater than fifteen percent, although. Uh not, not super steep, this site used to be. Or or the, the topography is partially the result of gravel removal. Uh this was an old gravel pit back here, so the um, the soils are um good sands and gravel, so we're, we're. Happy about that, um. I am described the zones, these are, this is the uh general residence zone, this is the single residence zone. And um this is the industrial zone. Property also um. Contains a wetland, this, this back. Part of the point of the property is wet, and there is an adjacent wetland um. On, this is the town of Wakefield's property that uh has a buffer zone into us, this is the, the stash line is the. Hundred-foot buffer zone from the wetlands, um. There is also a piece of riverfront, this line here is two hundred feet. Um from the river, which is adjacent to um. To the rail bed, so this is just the outer edge of that two hundred feet, and I think um. I think the Conservation Commission in their letter may have misunderstood with the direction that this two-hundred-foot riverfront comes from. Because they mentioned that we don't show the hundred foot, the hundred foot is out in here off our property, so we, we cannot show that. Um. But those are the, the, the wetland resources that we've got to deal with on the property. Uh there is also a, this, this uh line here. Is a uh trunk sewer, the town of Wakefield's, uh one of town of Wakefield's uh trunk sewers. Um running through the property, that is uh something that we'll be utilizing as, as a connection, point to the sewer. Um. Back to. This is the uh proposed. This is the proposed development that we've uh that we've got before you. Um as Brian described, it'd be uh this road, uh which we're calling Road A. Uh is forty-foot wide road, and uh the pavement width that we've provided on this is. Uh twenty-six feet. For a forty-foot road, the requirement is twenty-four, and for uh a fifty, it's twenty-eight, and. Um this plan uh provides twenty-six feet of pavement. The three house lots would, um these three, uh first three house lots would. Have access from the, from Road A, um and the back property obviously uh would also have its access off. Uh the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac is the required diameter um to allow for turnaround of safety vehicles. This plan is the roadway profile, and it shows, uh this. This being Salem Street shows what the slope of the roadway would be coming in. Um it initially goes up about the first fifty feet, slopes up, and then slopes down, uh this is the end of the cul-de-sac. Um we are. Um. As uh as Brian said, we're connecting to the eight-inch water main, uh all of the lots would have. Water surface service off of the new uh eight-inch main being installed. Um as I mentioned before, um we are uh proposing to tie into the trunk sewer. So our sewer starts uh in this location, it slopes down through the lot and. Shows a little bit better on, on this plan, slopes down through the lot and connects this dash line is the trunk sewer that, that I showed you before. Um so all of these lots would connect to that, and these buildings would. Uh this building would connect to a line here, and these buildings would connect out the back, and then all discharge at one. Uh one point, we're trying to minimize the number of connections we have to that existing uh sewer main, so. We um designed it with one connection point. And um from a drainage standpoint, we've uh we've done a drainage analysis that has been submitted to the board, and that shows that. Um that we're not increasing the rate of runoff um in any direction off the site, and we're accomplishing that by. Um. Uh first of all, infiltrating um rooftop runoff from the housing units, um these. These green boxes that I show here are infiltration units um that are proposed to, to. Um take the collected roof runoff and infiltrate them uh on-site, and. Also on uh Lot three, we have two. Large infiltration, subsurface infiltration systems uh here and here. Um those receive uh pre-treatment with a um, a pre-treatment device, and. Uh and then the, the stormwater is discharged uh through the ground, and uh we've got an emergency. Uh spillway or emergency outlet, uh that discharges out the back of the units and then ultimately uh towards the wetland. And as I said, the, the um, the stormwater is designed to meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards. Um and uh there will be, in addition to what was provided uh to your board. The Conservation Commission will get uh some additional information about um. The um, the, the stormwater standards and how those have been met. Um. And I think with that, I'll, I'll uh turn it back over to Brian or um.
Uh you have any other comments before?
I do, just two, two things for Rich, if I may, Mr. Chair, Rich, if you could just touch on two things that. Um that the uh AMRAD is, is already done with conservation, right, so?
Correct, yes, the, the, the um. The wetland lines are established and those buffer zones are set uh for a period of three years.
Great, thank you, and then Rich also uh maybe talk a little bit about the um. Um delineation of work line, what you anticipate.
Oh, sorry, um yeah, so, uh with a site like this, there's. You know, not, not much that won't be uh, won't be disturbed, and we've got a limit of work that. Um runs down the property line, and then out along the back of the units and back up. Um and that, that line is um. Our limit of work and our erosion control line.
So just to be clear, is the, the intent of the development project to develop essentially kind of, I'll call. Plan northeast section of this lot, because there's this, a section that continues into the wetlands, and that your silt. Sack represents your division of work from kind of the, that southwest corner. All the way through the balance of the, the, the site.
That's correct.
And then is that, is that specific, that limited work line, is that defined anywhere besides just the silt sack?
No, it's not, but we could, you know, we can add a uh a label to that.
I think that's, that's one thing that, from looking at my notes from our January meeting, that we, that the board would be issued, and. Making sure that there's a clear establishment of what land will not be disturbed as part of this project on a go-forward basis. Um so before we, before we uh open it up to members of the public, any members of the planning board have any? Or sorry, before we go to the planning board, the, the, I know I wanted to ask is, has there been any communication between the development project and? Town staff specifically, I'm thinking, uh the engineering department?
Uh yes, um they have not had a chance to complete their review.
Okay.
So um and they will be sending something in, but it's not done yet, because I asked for that, and uh. I think there was some illness within the department that prohibited that from happening before tonight, which we're fine, because we've got some time here anyways, so.
Yes, I spoke with um Bill Renault about it, and um, excuse me. There is a, I don't know if it's people back in school or whatnot, um but it seems like there are, they, they had an illness, and so the person. Who's supposed to be reviewing it didn't get a chance to finish um in time, and since it will be going before um ZBA as well as Conservation Commission. And Planning Board, they're trying to um get one complete review together to reflect their components and concerns. Uh commentary with the particular project as proposed.
Okay, and then the other question is, and, and I think you referenced Attorney McGrath, but I just want to put a fine point on it. This project has gone to CONCOM and they provided a preliminary review, is that correct?
No, what they've done is they've, um we went through a process with them that they have um locked in our wetlands delineation. So there's no dispute over what the wetland area is now, but we still have to file a notice of intent with them for the development of the project. Is that correct, Rich?
Yes, that's correct.
So the and then I also heard you say that there's going to be a a special permit. Issue to the ZBA that you're proposing on overlapping with the site, the definitive subdivision?
Correct. And to be clear, as you alluded to, these townhomes that you see on Lot Three. Um, you know, except as it might relate to the the roadway layout, um, you know, um, with. Um, right away, stuff that we had talked about during the preliminary plan, the permitting of those are not jurisdictional or subject matter for your board.
Yep.
Those are subject matter for the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, so can can you just put a fine point on what specifically would you be applying as per a special permit to the ZBA for?
Multifamily. Which would be an attack, I think it would classify as an attached dwelling complex because it's not a mid-rise apartment building, which it could be. It's not a garden building, which it could be, but again, we think it's more appropriate in this area. And somewhat lacking in Wakefield, you know, it's a it's a it's a product that we don't. Uh, really have a lot of, um, you know, townhomes like this. Um. It's similar like Partridge Lane, I think it is in Linfield where it's kind of buried back in the wetlands. You don't even know it's there. Um, and it also, um, eighteen percent of these would be affordable under our bylaw. Um, and um, that's a unique product. Uh, also, it's not a rental. These will be sold. Um, so um, there'll be affordable component to this through the zoning board of appeals price process, but it would be a special permanent process before then.
Okay, uh, in that case, I'd like to open it up to other members of the planning board. If you have any questions or concerns or comments you'd like to share.
If I could just add to that real quickly, Mr. Chair, just for clarification.
Sure.
If if for whatever reason, there's a failure on the special permit. Then we'd be looking to incorporate a different use on this. Lot um Three that would be allowed by right. You know, some type of an industrial use or other use that would be. You know, allowed by right and not require a special permit.
Understood. Um, I see that Sam has raised her hand, so I'll I'll defer to her prior to pivoting it to the balance of the board.
And just one quick thing I wanted to uh note for the board is that you should have a copy of the Conservation Commission. Comment uh review letter that came back from the application pertinent to your review. Um, if for some reason it didn't come through, let me know. I'm happy to resend something. Um, but it is, uh, it was one that was completed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Spalding.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Attorney McGrath and Mr. Williams. Um, Attorney McGrath, you answered one part of my question, like what if that back is denied? What do you have for plans? So that's to be determined. Um, uh, we got a letter from the Conservation Commission that came in September sixth, I believe. They're asking um or advising that. You works um in conjunction at the same time with the planning board and Conservation Commission. How are you planning to do that?
I'm gonna defer to Rich on that. Rich?
Yeah, we're gonna prepare a filing um. Um, and file, we have to file with with the planning board first. Um, and um. And with the ZBA, you're required to fire file. Um, with other boards first, but um as soon as we file with the ZBA, we'll be filing with the uh with the Conservation Commission.
Matt, thank you.
Yeah, so it'll be three boards looking at this at the same time, Mr. Spalding.
Mr. Lowry.
Yeah, could um, could we go over the list of requested waivers and and describe why? You're requesting some of these.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Rich.
Um, well, number one is um preparing a price for the bond. Uh, we think it's preliminary to do that. Um, at this point. Do you want, you want to discuss each one or do you want me to just go through them all?
I I guess you can go through them and if we have, you know, anyone has a comment on them, then we can discuss it at that point.
Um, item two is uh. The the requirements are that we. Put notes on each sheet on uh as to the construction methods and typically those. The description of those are in our details. Um, so it makes sense. Um, to do that and where we need to add notes, we add notes. And number three is um. We just need to um get state plan coordinates uh from a horizontal standpoint. At some corners and. Um, we will do that during this process. It will be done before the plans are done. We just, uh, we did not have that data. Uh, at the time of the filing, but we're not, we're not asking not to do that. Um, we'll do it during the process.
So at some point, you're gonna, the elevations are potentially gonna change and the bearing system is gonna change on all the plans?
That's correct.
Okay. So I assume at that point, this this waiver will disappear.
It will, yep. Uh, there's a lot of them that that um may disappear here. Um. Number four is the is basically the same issue that's gonna go away once we get the uh. The um, the horizontal coordinates on the corners. Number five, um, is uh the requirement to locate. And size all the trees on the property and uh this one will not go away. Um, we're asking for this because. Uh, we know the extent of um tree removal and um. Are hoping that we don't have to locate the trees, you know, this, it's a, it's a fairly big effort to do. Uh, knowing that they're gonna come down anyways.
So well, I'm assuming everything within your limit of work, all trees will be removed in that section. There'll be none left. Correct?
That's correct.
All right. Um, and are you at least gonna locate the trees within the twenty-five foot wetland buffer? Because I I'm almost positive that the Conservation Commission is gonna wanna see that to see what the effects are. And if you're taking a tree that may be shading uh. A lot of the wetlands. That's not in the buffer, that that may be an issue. So. Um, I would at a minimum like to see the tree, the the larger trees. Uh, along the wetlands buffer. Close to the development, just to see what the effects are gonna be.
Are you uh, are you talking about in the first twenty-five feet that we've got proposed as um non-disturbance?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
And and a little bit over that. So we, I wanna see what, how many trees are gonna be taken out back there and what their effects are gonna be. So, yeah, I.
If we agree to do fifty feet with that, with that. Would that cut it for you?
That should be fine, yeah. I I understand if you're, if you're basically clear cutting the rest of the lot. Um. Potentially line trees you you may wanna show. So if uh, if there are trees that are over the lot line. We wanna make sure that uh that's noted.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense.
Going forward within the butter that, you know, it's documented where that tree was.
Okay.
Rich, you know what Matt wants here? Cause I'm a little bit confused um with the conversation.
I know what he wants, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Trees that are that are maybe straddling or near the lot line so that if, if we need to go around it and save a tree that's. Mostly on our property but might be partially on someone else's property, we can accommodate that. Makes sense.
Yeah, and if you have a, if there's a, you know, a large specimen tree. On the your butter's uh property that you're not. Cutting the roots, affecting the root system on it. Yes, so. We'd like to, I'd like to see that.
Okay. But um, just make sure I I took my notes. Um, we're also measuring the large trees. Um, within fifty feet of the wetland, right? And and demarking them. Did I get that right? Yeah, okay. Um, six and seven are. Um. Items that are on the plan set but are requested to be on a separate sheet and um. It. Putting that information on makes it very tough to read, so we're asking that we can. We're showing that information within the plan set, but not on the specific sheet that it's requested. Um. Number eight. Uh, is also the same thing to show the zoning district on a specific sheet, but we, uh, I I think it was the um. The index plan, we showed it on the uh, on the plan sheet and other sheets. Um, number nine is. Um, also the location of easements. Uh, we show those on the plan sheet. Uh, but those that line work uh confuses the sheet that uh was requested to be on. So. We're um requesting it to be on on the sheet that we show it on. And number ten is uh. Cross-sections of the lots, uh, including the adjacent properties. Um. And I know that we say here that allow the applicant to provide. Uh, as condition of the approval. Uh, I think what we really wanna do is find out where we really need it, if we need it. And provide it as part of the process.
So are you anticipating adding any retaining walls anywhere?
Uh, we have some retaining walls um on the back property. Uh, when I say the back property, uh, the the back lot. Um. There, there are retaining walls there.
All right, because this is bas- basically why this. This condition's in there. So in in the past, we've had. Uh, developments that come through and. Um. I guess certain people weren't accustomed to reading plans and the heights of walls were kind of missed. So. Uh, cross-sections were asked to be put on so it could clearly be illustrated. You know, what? The the rise and run over walls and things and slopes, so.
Okay. And we could, we could do that. Um, I will say that the wall, the the wall that we've got is. It really doesn't face any butter. It faces the wetland. Um. But um. If if we want cross-sections through areas with walls, then we can do that. Uh, number eleven is um. Doing separate profiles for the gutter line. Um, and this is a, this is a way where we we typically ask for. Uh, to just do the um. Um, the profile along the center line, which is what what people normally use to build the road and to uh. To review it and uh see what the grades are. Um, number twelve. My section elevation drawings of all drainage structures and walls of scale of one to forty. Um. And we can. We can do the walls. Um, there are no drainage structures to provide a facade of, but. Um, we could do a a section through that, through that wall I spoke of. Um, and we have on number thirteen says uh. Uh, required elevations of top and and bottom of features such as curving and retaining walls. Um. It, we have spot elevations uh where appropriate and we've got gutter lines. Uh, or or centerline uh file or centerline profile of the center of the roadway, which is. What determines the curbing. Um. It's it's unusual to provide uh spot elevations along the curve and. Uh, since we've got the profile and contours as they hit it. Um.
Hey, Richard, Richard, I would agree with that for curbing locations. I do think, and I haven't validated individual locations, but where there are retaining walls, I would. Ask that we maintain having a top and bottom elevation at retaining walls for clarity.
Yeah.
Curbing totally with you, I don't think, I think that's overkill, but I think at retaining walls, there still is a a value associated with that.
And and I'll, I I'll verify it. I think there are spot elevations on the walls. Uh, I just don't wanna go off the sheet. Um. I wanna go through the waivers and I'll go, I'll go back to that during um the follow-up here and just confirm. That that's the case. Um. Number fourteen requires tree planting plan to be certified when registered uh professional landscape architect. Um. We're providing the the trees as required by the. By the rules and regulations. Um. There really isn't, it's not like a planting plan. It's um. Trees, if we want to um have something different. Or something specific for the landscape architect to provide, we can. We can do that. It just uh, it, it's unusual. Given that we're, we're just planting trees, street trees. Um. Fifteen is the the. Caliper and species of existing trees. We went through that. Um. Sixteen has some specific way to shade um utilities and. Um, we're, we're asking that we can show them as they show on the plan. We think it's the. Uh, the best way to uh to show them so that they stand out from each other. And um are are clearly identified on the plan. Um. Seventeen requires uh soil surveys, test bits and test pourings. Um. Taken at intervals, a hundred foot intervals. We've done soil testing throughout the sites, not exactly at a hundred feet. But we have a good idea based on our testing what the soils are. Um, it's all good sands and gravel, so. Uh, it's, it's very consistent through the site. Um. So we feel like we've got enough um enough testing to to cover our, our uh stormwater and um. And the roadway construction. Number eighteen uh requires a right-of-way width of fifty. We're asking for forty. We've discussed that. Number nineteen. Uh, requires pavement width of twenty-six for mine street and. Uh, we're asking for twenty-four.
Rich, you gotta clarify this because I think you said to the board.
Yes, so I apologize.
So I don't know if it's a typo here or something, but.
No, we we are asking for twenty-four. I am sorry. Um.
So I was right, you were wrong.
Yes, as usual. Um, so yes, I apologize. We are um. We are asking for twenty-four when the requirement is twenty-six and that's, that's something that we talked about during the preliminary stage. Um, not that it was agreed, but we suggested that's what we were, we're gonna do. Um. So it's a, it's a reduction of two feet. Um. Number twenty uh requires a grass strip uh six feet wide. And because we're asking for a waiver on the um, the roadway width, the. Um, the sidewalk gets pulled in and reduces the the tree planting strip. Now, um, obviously on the side. If we decide not to have a sidewalk on one side, it doesn't become an issue that um. That planting strip will be um seven and a half feet. Uh, but on the side that. But on the side that does have the sidewalk, the planting strip would be two and a half feet. Which is not. Unusual, those, those exist throughout town. Twenty one is a requirement of four feet of cover over drain, we have some locations that are less than four. And the materials that we're using for drainage can withstand. Whatever loads would, would be over it, even if they're not four feet of cover. And it's a, it's a waiver we, we routinely ask for, it allows us not to be bringing in extra fill. We can keep the, the road profile down and. And again, reduce the amount of trucking and fill and all that. And similarly on twenty two, the, the requirement is for reinforced concrete pipe, we're requesting. HDPE pipe. And again, that's the common material that's, that's used today and. I'm, I'm sure the town engineer will be reviewing that. And, and number twenty three is just a general. Waiver from the cross section to show it like we're showing it, there's a lot of elements to the cross section and we've included. The, the widths and, and. Grass plots and all that from the, the items that we, we already discussed in the cross section and. We'd like to use that. And that's all of them.
All right, thank you.
Any other member, or Mr. Lowery, do you have any other questions or concerns?
Not at this point, no.
Any other members of the board?
Yeah, I, I just have one question, can we go back to the, the drainage? There, there was a better map, there was color coded.
Yeah, I'll go back to that.
Yeah, so is there pre-treatment in the multifamily parking lot? Because I see it right in the, in the cul-de-sac.
There's pre-treatment here and there's pre-treatment here.
Oh, down there, sorry, I missed it, okay, all right. It's a little bit of an academic question on my part, the, I was struck. That there's no effect on peak runoff, but significant improvement in total volume, is that, is that a, like a really. Good effect of these, these infiltration ponds?
Yeah, it's, it's common that if you treat for the, for the rate of runoff. That you have a big area for infiltration, because during the peak of the storm. You're dealing with so, you've got to infiltrate so much that in the, the. Less intense beginning and end of storms, you're, you get to infiltrate the majority of the runoff, so it, it. That's why you get that benefit, so commonly in these, in the new designs. You, you do have that benefit of a substantial reduction in overall volume.
All right, and so, I mean, it sounds like we should be expecting a lot more of this kind of drainage. Like these kinds, this infiltration and, and the like.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're doing more and more of it.
Okay. Now that, that's helpful, I, I appreciate that. I guess. I have some questions for the, the, the planning board members about some of these waivers, just wondering to what extent. You know, there. There are things that, that we would want to necessarily be responding to in our subdivision rules. Going forward, so that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, any other members of the planning board? Before I opened up to the public, I had a couple specific questions and maybe more comments for future to, to talk about. Subsurface drainage structures, I know we've had a number of conversations on other projects. Related to operations and maintenance. And so I, I'm assuming we probably haven't gotten that far along in the process, but I want to flag that as something that I'd like to make sure that we. We hit on as we go through this process of figuring out how to make sure that any of these elements will be maintained after. The developments are sold to homeowners. And then, I don't know if I, when I was going through here, I didn't see it and maybe I missed it, but. One of the comments that we talked about previously was a screening between this lot and the adjacent lots with some sort of. Element, whether it be a fence or tree. So I'm not sure if I, you know, for a, for a privacy concern perspective, so I don't know if I saw anything there, but that's something that I'd be interested in revisiting. And finally, more of a clarification, this roadway, Road A, that is intended to be a private way, not a public way accepted by the town, is that correct?
It's going to be subject to both, it will initially be private, as you know, but we're anticipating that sometime the town might want to accept it, that will be up to town meeting. But it will be, we will give a road acceptance plan to the town as part of the rules and regulations to do what you wish with it.
Okay. And I'm just trying to remember, the acceptance of the road, that is the, that is the, at the discretion of the town engineer, correct?
Well, it's really, it's a process that has to go through town meeting.
Okay.
That I think is initiated by the town engineer or the planning department, historically. The, the, my recollection is, is that the, the, the. The DPW likes to get as many of these roads accepted as possible, because it affects the chapter ninety one money that we get. For state road maintenance, etc.
Okay.
But either way, you know, this, this will be. This will be governed by a homeowners association coupled with, with a condominium association, so. Will be delegating maintenance requirements and all of the drainage and O and M and all the stuff that you're talking about.
Yep, that, that's kind of what I anticipated. So just want to make sure we get a copy of those, just to make sure that we're, we're satisfied with those documentation prior to the formal approval.
Mr. Chair, I have another couple of questions.
Okay.
Could you? Rich, could you go over where that wall was, I, I think I, I see where it is. And then I'm also curious, kind of tying together where the wait, snow storage plan is out here, how. How the snow removal is going to happen?
This is the wall. One here and there's a little section here. This, this parking is up at the first floor level and these are walkout basements, the lower level. So. This is a. Not a parking spot, but a section of pavement for. Emergency vehicle maneuvering. So this section of wall and this section of wall. And as far as a snow removal. It's, there's not a lot of space, but there are some places to put snow, adjacent to the driveways and. You know, locations here, here, and I would say to the extent that. They don't have room to store snow, that it would have to be taken off site. For the roadway itself, it would be just like any other road, that, you know, be plowed along the edge of the road.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with. It appears some of the ends of the driveways and that turnaround would lead to a wall that's. Kind of close to the, some of it close to the wetlands buffer, so we wouldn't have any snow dumping into that area, would we?
It wouldn't be allowed, and I'm sure the CONCOM is gonna make that a condition.
I understand that, but I'm always looking at engineering, so. So it doesn't happen, not just putting a sign up, because when we get a lot of snow. Those signs usually get plowed away the first thing and. We're dealing with issues, so I just want to make sure it's been looked at. I assume. Each of these. Units has one parking garage and there are other spaces in the driveway, correct?
That's correct, there are, each unit has. The parking spot inside the building and a parking spot outside, and there are also. One, two, and then five more, seven total spaces outside, extra.
And what size are those spaces?
I'm a eighteen.
Okay.
Just with the exception of this, this is a handicap accessible spot.
All right, and then one last question for now, you've got dedicated, dedicated green space allotments, what do you envision? Those to be? I can, I can address that, those will be. That's a requirement under the special permit process for attached dwellings, that you have to have outdoor space that can be dedicated to units, so we're anticipating that. Those will be dedicated for, for gardening purposes. Really, you know, people want to use that area, but they would have the opportunity to do that for their outdoor, their own outdoor enjoyment. So it'll be exclusive use area for the particular units. Could they put a. Patio on there or something? No, it would not be able to affect, they won't be able to affect the drainage, so it would have to be, you know, pervious. All right. Then I'm sure that's going to get dealt with in detail at the zoning board through the special permit process. All right, again, no further questions at this point.
Yeah, anyone else from the planning board? Seeing no, no additional hands, I'll open it up for any comments from members of the public.
Do you want me to leave my screen up or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So anyways, if you're interested in providing comments on it, please feel free to raise your hand and. So Richard Stewart, so as a reminder for members of the public, please state your name and turn your camera on and state your address, like you wish you decide. Richard Stewart. Rich, you're continuing to be muted.
Sorry about that, can you hear me now?
Yes, and please turn on your, your camera if, if possible, and then state your address.
Unfortunately, I have an old computer here, it's not really working, sorry about that. So anyhow, I was participating in the February MBTA community forum.
And, sorry, the, please state your address.
One fifty seven Salem Street.
Thank you.
Okay, I was, again, a little history, I was attending the MBTA forum back in February, and at the end of it, I became aware of this. Project that was going on unbeknownst to me that this was even happening at the time. And I expressed a desire to make a comment, I was denied the ability to do that, and I said I'd be notified. When the definitive plan came out and have an opportunity, I never received any notice concerning this meeting. From the town or from the planning board or from anybody, no notice whatsoever, and I'm a directive, so why was I not notified?
Sam, can you, can you comment, I, I didn't understood that notices had gone out.
Notices did go out, and could you state your address again, I'm happy to go double check the butter list.
One fifty seven Salem Street, directly from the street from one fifty four and one fifty eight.
So across the street is not required, required to be noticed as part of our current code. Only direct butters.
Well, that's interesting, because the one for the conservation commission unlisted as in a butter.
And they may, they may be, they have their own code, they're not utilizing chapter, the same chapter that we are, and. That's, that's all I can speak to, is that I know that it's, I double checked it, triple checked it, to make sure that we were following what was laid out in code.
How, literally, where this street's going to come out, and where you're going to bulldoze the houses right in front of my picture window, that this somehow doesn't affect me?
I'm not speaking to that, I'm just letting you know what the current code states.
I'm going to look out my window from the last thirty years and it's all going to be gone, and I, I don't, I'm not deemed a person that's in a butter? I find that hard to believe. And could you quote me or show me, I've seen nothing in any of the bylaws I've seen that says what it is that you're stating here?
I can shed some light, Mr. Chair, just for informational purposes, it's, it's, it's the subject of Massachusetts general law, it's not our local bylaw. That under Mass General Law's chapter forty one, butters are given notice and they're not deemed to be. People across the street, which goes to the general nature of the, what you said at the beginning of the meeting, which is. In essence, subdivisions and by right, so it's really directive butters. For the notice purposes, not to say that Mr. Stewart certainly can't participate and give his opinion, he's here tonight anyways, but that, that is the law.
Then, then why is the conservation commission doing it, if the Massachusetts general law says you can't do this?
Conservation Commission operates under a different law, they operate under a different statute and regulatory authority.
And the person next to me at one fifty five, who's going to have the driveway, literally. The road pointing right in his front door, he's not notified either? I mean, come on, it, it's, the law says that, doesn't mean you can't do it, is there a law that says you cannot notify us? I'm not asking Mr. Return, Mr. McGrath, I'm asking. Planning board, there's nothing that says you cannot do it, correct?
I am not aware of anything that says you, we cannot.
Well, this is kind of a big deal here. You know, you're going to clear cut the entire area in front of two houses that have been looking at this, I've lived here for thirty years, my neighbor's been here for twenty eight years. Everything's gone and we don't even get, we don't even get noticed. And then when I showed up back in February and I asked to speak and I was told I couldn't speak, but I would be noticed at that time, there was no indication, I clearly stated I was at. One fifty seven, no one said you weren't going to be noticed. And then the irony is I go back and I look in the January meeting and there was discussions about letting people know what was going on here and giving them an opportunity to speak. I show up at the meeting a couple of weeks later and I'm denied it, it's very frustrating. And my call at the time was, by the time we have this meeting, pretty much everything's going to be already decided. I'm watching this right here, looks like everything's pretty much been decided to me. So other than I'm here and I check off a box, even though I'm not supposed to be here, because the law says I'm not, even though I look directly at my window and see what's going to come. What is the value of the participation of people that are directly impacted by this, that just happened to be across the street? If it was your house and you were across the street, I'm sure you'd be upset. Obviously, no one's going to answer this, let's go on, a couple of questions for you. If we did the fifty foot right away, which by the way is the same fifty foot right away that we have on Salem Street. Would that impact the number of units in the condominium portion of the project? Would it reduce the number from what's already been defined now, would it have to be less as a result of reconfiguring to the fifty foot right away?
Attorney McGrath, do you want to take that one?
I think we went over, I think, I think Rich is prob, Rich Williams is probably more qualified to answer that for Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, I'll answer it, it does not change the number of units in the back.
Okay, so why can't we do? Okay, so why can't we do what our bylaws say that we can do? If it says fifty, let's do fifty. Does that impact, you said in a previous meeting that if you did the fifty foot right away. With the street width of that, it would require a change in the calculations for the drainage. Would that still be true if you went to the fifty foot right away?
If we increased the amount of payment, yes, it would change the calculations.
Okay, so it's it's kind of a minor thing there, next thing. Are those condominiums that are gonna be down there subject to national flood insurance requirements?
They will not be in the flood.
They're they're not in the FEMA flood hazard zone?
They will not be in the FEMA zone, no.
Cuz I'm looking at the Mass G I S map right now, it clearly shows. That the National Flood House layer goes pretty much up to where the grade changes and it comes down to where this is all been. Decided, I'm looking at it right now. Same with the.
Yeah, it goes by, i- i- if I, if I could answer that question, um it goes by elevation, we've got. Elevation out there and we have the line. That defines the um. The flood elevation noted on the plan and it's it's outside of any work that we're proposing.
So the FEMA map's incorrect?
No, the FEMA map just gives an elevation and you need to do survey to determine where that elevation lies on your property.
So none of, none of these properties down, they're gonna be subject to flood insurance requirements?
That's correct.
Okay, alright. With all the trees being removed out there, I I know there's been a discussion, no one has the actual number here. What, how is that in some way gonna be replaced, I mean, it looks pretty tight out there, it doesn't look like there's a lot of room out there. So how, what's it gonna look like when it's done, just a wide open area? With a couple of two families, a single, and then a whole bunch of individual condominiums in there? What I'm trying to say is, when I'm looking at my window now, how's it gonna look when this is done, just a wide open area?
Well, I think it'll look like the landscaping that's that's on, you know, the rest of your neighbors' property.
The rest of our neighbors have mature trees all around. You've said you guys are gonna clear cut this, it's all gonna be removed, what's it gonna be replaced with?
The street trees and landscaping.
How many?
Richard, at this time, have you, have the the final number of street trees been? Identified, my understanding is that it's contingent on. The width of the roadway.
Yeah, the street trees are shown on the plan. Have I counted them up, I have not, but.
I I understand, I'm part of the choose, like we have access to information, I mean, there's literally nothing at the planning board website, you know, I'm. I'm trying to peek on, you know, I'm trying to see the, what you have there from your computer. On my computer, it's kinda hard to see it, I just, you know, I hear everything's clear cut, I'm gonna look out my window now and I'm just gonna see. A blank area all the way down. With a couple of, you know, houses sticking in there and, you know, forty, fifty cars coming out of there on a regular basis. That's not very appealing, to say the least.
So some of the materials that we're reviewing right now have been provided to the board within the past week or so. Even less time in some, some cases, so after this hearing, we're going to be uploading a number of the materials that we're reviewing tonight. In advance of the next. Meeting that we'll be reviewing these documents, and as Attorney McGrath referenced. Additional submissions are gonna be going into the Conservation Commission as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I I understand all that, I'm just trying to 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 vision from from where I sit at my house. What this is gonna look when it's done, you know, I mean, there could have been a great opportunity for a nice cul-de-sac in there, it's a nice housing, could have been real nice. They wanna maximize their profit, I get, you know, they're gonna create twenty-five million dollar plus project out there. Wonderful, but for all of us that are a- around it, doesn't look so good. That's a concern, and not having an ability even earlier on in this process, be able to participate. Even though members of the board even brought it up way back in January, might be a good idea. Let some people have some, you know, some feedback here of what's going on. Here we are now, and then I'm hearing the timing now is quicker because of these submissions, now there's only some number of days. And everybody's gonna get together and all these groups are gonna get together and all this is gonna happen very, very quickly. And all of us sitting here, literally. Just sit on the sidelines and and we don't have any input into this at the end of the day. It's very frustrating. Especially for somebody and my neighbor and the neighbor next to me and the neighbor next to them. We're boxed out. And we don't have to be, the law says you don't have to do it, but certainly there was an opportunity to do it.
I can just add to that, Mr. Chair, just for Mr. Stewart's information. We don't want anyone to be boxed out, um this is the first hearing on this project. Um, we are, this is gonna go on for a while and and things are gonna change on this project. We're more than happy to meet with Mr. Stewart and some of the neighbors to talk to them about screening they might want on this lot landscaping. Um, you know, sometimes these public hearings are not the easiest place to do that um with Zoom. So, Mr. Stewart, I will in- invite you and your neighbors, if you would like to meet with us to get a better understanding, to. Talk about mitigation that we can do across the streets, so you have a full understanding of what's gonna happen through you, Mr. Chair, we're happy to do that, Mr. Stewart.
I appreciate that, the problem is my neighbors don't know about it either, because they weren't notified.
You can let them know, we're we're happy.
To let them know, the planning board should let them know, that's my point, you know?
Sure.
I'm not the planning board, I haven't known about this, you guys have been working on this since at least January. Why is it, why is it the onus on us?
So, to be clear. There was a preliminary plan that was submitted by the applicant in January. That preliminary plan is. A plan that is submitted for the purposes of soliciting generalized feedback from the planning board. In advance of the submission of the definitive plan, which is what we're reviewing today. The definitive plan is the the formal review, where there's gonna be a number of back and forths to Attorney McGrath's point. His point earlier related to the statutory timeframe that would ob- obligate us to. Consider this by the end of October. As Attorney McGrath said, the the board and the applicant can work to extend. That timeframe, which we will do so, uh you know, assuming that. That's something that the applicant is amenable to, otherwise, if we don't respond, it's deemed approved by statute, but. If we were forced to. Take a vote on something that wasn't fully baited. Be based on the request of waivers, we would have the right to reject the subdivision, but. Based on the previous working relationship between the applicant and the planning board, we will extend. As required to ensure a full review of these plans, especially given that they're gonna be reviewed concurrently by other boards.
I appreciate that, and don't get me wrong, I I understand, I'm looking at the, again, the plan right there and and there's an awful lot of building. In a relatively small spot, and everything that's there right now is gonna be gone, there's, there's gonna be, it's gonna be very challenging. To create some type of an environment in there, not that it's gonna recreate what was there, I understand that. It's, it's gonna be far from that, because there just isn't a lot of room. To do of much more than what is already gonna be planned for in there, a couple of trees here and there maybe. That's, you know, that's a big change from what's there, big change. Can it be modified some more, I don't know, but what I'm seeing right there. From my perspective, doesn't look good, it's just too much, too many buildings. Uh not enough green space, not the opportunity even to create, I mean, even they're talking about for the houses. You can't even put a porch in your backyard, you gotta put a garden in there, come on, come on. Where are you gonna put the snow, between that, between the condos? It's the same, there just isn't a lot of room, it's really tight, there's an awful lot of stuff in a very small area there. And and I don't know if there's room for negotiate to create some more space by cutting down the number of the units. The developer doesn't want it, this is what they want, I I can't answer that. I've seen enough of these, I've been involved in enough of these meetings over the years and. Pretty much what you see now is generally what it pretty much ends up being, so. Uh just a heads up here from somebody that's across the street. It's very frustrating what's occurred and and unfortunately, you know, from where I sit, I just don't see where there's gonna be a lot of opportunity. Uh other than there's a, you know, a willingness to cut back on what's in there to a certain extent. To make it more of a, you know, of a of a residential area than just a a mishmash of. A couple of, you know, two families, a single family, then a large multifamily development in the back, I mean, it is what it is. Anyhow, that's um. My point, I appreciate the time of the of the board and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, uh I have the the next. Uh the next person who's got their hand raised as Scott Marcy.
Sorry about that, yes, uh Scott McCollie, thirty-two Walden Road, um. I concur with someone Mr. Stewart's comments, um I was on the meeting that he attended and I recall him being very upset that he wasn't notified at the time. I do recall people saying that the butters would be notified. I think the letter of the law may be that because he's across the street, he did not need to be notified, but. Knowing my neighbor who had a curb cut done to expand the width of their driveway, I believe they had sent out postcards to people without, within three hundred feet of their property. Could be wrong on that, but that was my understanding, I think as a courtesy, the board might consider in the future. Uh considering there are so few homes within this area that people should have been notified. So that they could have been made aware, um because then it would save possibly. Some contention like like you have this evening and some of this could have been worked out before you showed up here tonight. Um I have some concerns, snow removal, like Mr. Lowery said. I'm looking at, you know, in this condo area where the parking lot is, you have. A retaining wall where the wetland is, which is gonna be an ideal spot for the people who plow this to plow. Snow and then you have a parking space that's for emergency vehicles, which is gonna be another ideal to place that snow. And then in the uh in the circle. You know, the far side of that circle on the lot line is within. I don't know, twenty feet of the two hundred foot line for the wetland, so I I'm just looking, if you get a foot or two of snow in this area, you got. Twenty thousand plus square feet of snow times however many inches of feet that you have. That that's a lot of snow for this, and if you have uh uh salt contaminants and other stuff in this, where is that going and and the concerns for the wetlands in that area? I'm not sure if uh for trash removal, with rubble rubbish removal, if all of these would have individual cans like everybody else in town has. Or if because of these condos that there would be some type of dumpster and where that might end up being parked. Um and then the other question I have is. Are all these units subject to new specialized energy code in Wakefield, where it could be all electric units and. With that, my understanding is each unit needs to have an EV charging station per unit. Um there's gonna be a lot of amperage of power and I'm not sure if the existing infrastructure on Salem Street been handled this much in that area. So I don't know if that's been taken into account, but those are just some of my questions, just from looking at this tonight. Cuz I haven't really seen this other than the initial one that was presented before, so. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, uh the rubbish removal and uh validation of the power, those are. Really strong additional comments that will make sure are included and tracked as part of this process. Uh the next person I see is uh Alicia, I want. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you did, hi, I'm Alicia Cercola and this is my neighbor TM Sanborn, we are residents of one thirty-eight Salem Street. Um we are new to Wakefield and we just wanna say that we um are grateful that this is on Zoom and of all, like all the things that are going on with our. Lovely town, um I think we just wanted to kind of confirm the timeline since this is still. Um a plan and in progress, so how long do these typically kind of? The the planning process go for, um and then how do, how can we?
Appeal.
Appeal.
We're. We uh, we already have a letter into the town um with the sidewalk work. We now have water um rushing into our driveway heading towards our house, so. We have sidewalks done, the burn isn't done appropriately and every storm I have to shovel sand out of our driveway already. Um and have a letter out to have that repaired, so now we see this. Um building plan that is foreign to us and we're concerned about. Yeah, obviously additional water in our property and we're immediately abutting. This plan with a slope that comes from the property next to us where the two townhomes. In the very first lot will be looking at us. And that we have a very damp backyard that with minimal snow, there's water above the grass line. So. Uh we have a lot of learning to do and we hope that you guys don't mind that we participate and ask a lot of questions, um cuz this is a little overwhelming.
A- absolutely, uh you know, Attorney McGrath, you've been involved with a number of these. Reviews, do you wanna maybe give your read on life in terms of what you think a timeline associated with this review would look like, especially given that you're gonna be. Going with other boards?
I would, my, my guess and experience would be, would be you're probably looking at about a six month process.
Before it's approved or denied?
Yeah, to get it to a pinnacle point.
Okay, and then. Say that it's passed in six months, when does construction and all of that start?
That would usually be pretty quick, um you know, a lot of these, a lot of the permits are good for a year, so you know, the it's not like you can pocket it and sit on it for five years. Um so um, you know, usually it proceeds pretty quickly.
And the other thing I would just make sure that, I wanna make sure all the people who are talking tonight are aware is. This meeting is specifically for the subdivision of the land from one piece of land into multiple different lots that could be buildable. Some of the questions related to specific architectural design or some of the geometry of the buildings. Unless it affects elements of the the drainage or other site related things, that's not the purview of this board. And if the applicant submits something that meets all of the rules and regulations, they have a right. To split their land into multiple pieces, we don't have the ability to just deny it because we don't want them to have additional buildable lots. However, the underlying zoning, they have to either conform to the underlying zoning. Which in this case is a little more complicated because it's split amongst an industrial, a general residence and a single residence. And if they would like to do anything that's a more dense or out of conformance of the underlying base zoning. The process is for the applicant to submit something to the zoning board of appeals. And ask for relief to that zoning, and so that's what Attorney McGrath was referencing when he's talking about the ZVA is. Application that would be done concurrent with this subdivision.
Okay.
If I could have.
Does that help explain it, I apologize if if it's, I know it's a lot, it's overwhelming.
It is, but it it it's, yeah, it's gonna take time and we'll look things up and read and maybe meet up with Richard Stewart. Um but we wanna be involved and we're not excited about it, um we agree, you know. We haven't been here thirty years, my heart breaks for him, I just wanted to acknowledge that because. I don't fe- feel like he was necessarily acknowledged in his frustrations, but um. You know, it just, this is a huge development that is really gonna change where we all bought into. So we could get out of work and come home and have trees and stuff, um you know, it's gonna really change the dynamic of the neighborhood. So.
Okay, uh thank you for your comments. I don't see any other hands raised except for Richard, but I think his hand was raised previously and never went down. So unless anyone else has any other com- anyone else from, any other members of the public have any additional comments? Okay, uh not seeing anything, uh in terms of next steps, uh Attorney McGrath. When would you want to continue this this hearing?
Yeah, if I could just, a couple of points of information, um. For the, for the nice folks that just spoke, and again for Mr. Stewart and and any other neighbors, and other neighbors that you talk about. We're more than happy to meet with you um individually or as a group. With our engineer, with Rich Williams, sometimes that's helpful. Um, to get, to help you get an understanding of what's, what's happening here. Um, and also to discuss with you elements of the project that maybe we can make adjustments on that would be accommodating to you. Mitigation items, we're open to those discussions with neighbors. We always are. Um, so through you, Mr. Chair, I wanna offer that. My office is in Wakefield and very reachable. Feel free to call me. I'm happy to set up a time that we could get together. More than happy to do that. Um, number two, um, when we do apply to the zoning board, I will tell you that's a different notice. So for Mr. Stewart's benefit and other neighbors, that under state law is a butters to what butters within three hundred feet of the property. So that's where some people are talking about. So I think everybody that's here tonight will will and should, um, get notice of the zoning board process, um, for, uh, the back lot. You know, and third, we recognize change is gonna happen here. Um, you know, my client owns this land. Um, they have a right to develop it. Um, and, uh, it's, it's their land for their benefit. Um, we're gonna try to do so in a responsible manner, meeting all the regulations and rules of the in doing so. Um, we're committed to doing that. And as I said, we're also committed to, committed to talking to folks in the area to maybe go above and beyond that and to, um, put some enhancements in that might help, um, some of their concerns. So, um, with that said, um, as far as continuance goes, um, I would say that, um, we do not need to be in next meeting. Um, I would probably continue it for maybe your meeting in October and then we can tell you where we stand with the filing. We've got, we've got some, by that time we might have some memo, a memo from the town engineer. We've got some homework assignments to do on our end. Um, and, um, we can kinda give you an update of where we are on the filing with the other boards, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. McGrail, just tentatively, I'll, I'll have you, uh, a, a hold for October eighth. And we can finalize as the date gets closer if we need to either push it or, uh, maintain that.
I would also respectfully suggest that we should discuss an extension of time tonight. Uh, because I think the way I calculated it, your deadline is October twenty-one. Um, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, we're not looking to set it, we're not looking to push a deadline. Um, we know this is gonna take time to work through, so we're committed to, um, you know, not putting anyone's feet to the fire here, uh, to bring this to a reasonable conclusion for everybody and make sure there's enough time for that to happen. So, um, knowing the process, I, I, I would suggest that we, um, extend it probably right now to December thirty-one, um, just to kinda.
Have a clean break.
Yeah, just have a clean break and we don't have to worry about, uh, you know, further extensions for the rest of this year.
Uh, I, I think that would be, I think, I, I could speak to the board and say we would be amenable to, 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 to that approach.
And we're not gonna be at the zoning board until at the earliest, the, uh, the end of October and more likely in, in November. So, you know, it's probably gonna go beyond that. But at least it kinda gives us a clean break that everybody can take a deep breath and know that there's no, you know, we're showing our commitment that I said at the beginning that we're, we're, we're not, you know, we're looking to work cooperatively.
And I remember, uh, do we, do we have to send something to you in writing in order to, to request that? I'm trying to remember.
Probably your, your board vote to accept the extension, I would send a letter confirming it, uh, and that would be clocked in with the town clerk. There is a requirement for it to be clocked in.
Understood. In that case, does any member of the board wish to make a motion?
Excuse me. Hello?
Oh.
Excuse me.
Uh, is this related to one fifty-four and one fifty-eight Salem Street?
No, it is related to Nablos Road, Nablos.
Yes, yes.
Yes, about that, uh, yeah, about this project.
About this project?
Yes. Good after, good evening. Okay, Saad Abu Zahra, that's the, and Jihad Abu Zahra, I would like to speak to you. Supposedly our lawyer was supposed to be with you. I don't know why he's not there. And that's why we didn't raise our, uh, hands to talk, but now since he's not there, we, Saad would like to talk to you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Saad Abu Zahra, uh, Nabros Rahel to Trust, the abutting property. Uh, we understand this application. What I need is, if it is possible, for the uh, applicant as well as the engineer to give us complete set of application which he, which they submitted to the town so that we can study it very carefully, so that it does not reflect negatively on Nablos Road. And, uh, at the same time, we, uh, we work with the neighborhood so that everyone is happy. So please, I need a, I need a full application for which the engineer and, uh, submitted to the town. And he will be submitting to the conservation commission of, for everywhere they submit. I need a full, uh, submitter of all of this material.
Okay, and then, yeah, we, we don't know why our lawyer is not there, but I would tell him to contact, you know, directly Mr. Brian McGrail. Is that okay? Yes, is that okay?
Can I respond, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please do, Mr. McGrail.
Hi, Said.
Hi.
Um, who's your lawyer?
Uh, Mr. The.
Hey, Kevin Gini.
Kevin Gini.
Oh, Kevin Gini, okay, sure.
He said he was supposed to be in the meeting. I hope he's okay. I don't know why he's not there. That's why we didn't raise our hands and that's why we didn't speak because he was supposed to handle, yes.
To the chair folks, I, I know Kevin well. I'd be happy to reach out to him.
Thank you.
So, so we'll be able to get full.
So, yeah, and. Yeah, Said, so in general, the plans that were submitted that we reviewed today, they will be posted on our, on the planning board's website and available to the public after this meeting. Again, this, these plans have come in recent, recently to the planning board and, uh, this is the beginning of the process, not the end. So you should be able to, to download those, um, shortly.
I, I need the plans two feet by three feet so that I can see them clearly. Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. McGrail, if you are meeting with the neighbors, can we, how can we know about the meeting time so that we participate?
I'm happy to set up, as I said, I'm happy to set up a meeting. If you guys wanna initiate it or I can initiate it with you got, you folks and we can let the other neighbors know. We, we, you know, that might not be a bad idea.
Let me, let Mr. Gini call you directly and then he will set that for us and then you communicate with the, with the neighbors and we have one, one meeting.
I've dealt with, I've dealt with Kevin many times. I know him. Jay Conley days.
Yes, yes. And we would love to meet with Mr. William because we know him very well too. And they, you know, all we need is to know that it is not, it will not affect our land or, you know, uh, negatively. Especially water, water and the wetland and all of this. Okay?
Understood. I'll be in touch with Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick clarification of the information I emailed you from the application from when you came into the office. Um, the only thing that's missing is the color diagram that they were showing on the screen earlier. Um, Brian, if you could send that to me, just so I have it for our records, that was not included. Um, that would be great. In case anybody else wants to reach out as well.
I can, I can contact Mr. Richard Williams, who knows me well, to get all the information if possible.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so. You know, thank you for that. I'm gonna try to move, move this to the continuation perspective so we can close the matter for tonight. We have a couple other items on the agenda. Uh, uh, any other members of the planning board, do I hear a motion related to an extension associated with this plan?
So move to the, the, we accept to the thirty-first of December.
Second, your second, thank you. So move, moved by Mr. Lowery to, uh, request an extension to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street. Uh, Theo Noel.
Uh, yes.
Kevin York.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Matt Lowry.
Yes.
And myself, a yes. So the motion passes five to nothing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, and we have you, you're tentatively on the schedule for the October eighth, twenty twenty-four planning board meeting. And, uh, if, if that ends up being changed, uh, you should be able to see so in the posted agendas. Anything else, Attorney McGrail, before I move on to the next item of business?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So in that case, I will move us to, uh, agenda item number four. A and R associated with, uh, three fourteen Salem Street. Uh, Attorney McGrail, I believe this is yours as well.
Uh, good evening, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, Joe Brodigan, on behalf of the, uh, the applicant. Here, I'm the, I'm an attorney in Boston. My address is forty Broad Street, Boston, Massachusetts. I represent, uh, Michael Touche and its various entities, uh, who are the purchasers of, of the, the, these properties at three fourteen, three thirty-six, uh, and, uh, three thirty Salem Street. Uh, he purchased them on July, uh, twenty-sixth, uh, of this year. Uh, and, uh, he has subsequently hired, uh, Bishonda and Associates, Paul Bishonda is here as well. Uh, and he has, uh, uh, drawn an A and R plan that was seeking endorsement by the board today. Uh, attorney, you're correct, a hundred percent correct. Attorney McGrail, uh, was the person that was able to get, um, uh, all the permits, uh, the variances and the special permits, uh, that were provided for this project. Uh, yeah, but he did it for a, a, a different entity, uh, that was a potential purchaser of the property at one point. Uh, but that transaction did not go through, uh, and then subsequently my client purchased, uh, the property uh, from, uh, the owner. The owner was not the applicant, um, originally, uh, on behalf of Mr. McGrail. It was done, I believe, during a period of due diligence in the investigation of whether they were gonna purchase the property. Uh, so, um.
So Joe, do you mind, so one, thank you for that explanation of everything. Um, before you, you, um, continue, I just wanna set the table similar to what we did with the subdivision. So, or members of the public who are not aware, what we're gonna be going through right now is what's called an approval not required. Uh, so with the approval not required, it's a process, again, set up by statute and mass general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L, that consists of a streamlined process procedure for, allows certain properties to not go through the full subdivision approval. The purpose of this process is to simplify the approval process for minor land changes for property owners. This process consists of a landowner submitting to the planning board today, uh, documents of the proposed land transfer that demonstrates the parcels meet three separate legal definitions by statute. They must have adequate frontage, uh, to a, uh, adequate way and that the lots must have adequate access from the way to the buildable portion of a lot. The planning board reviews these plans that are submitted and if it complies with all the necessary standards, then we are forced to endorse it, uh, with an approval not required, uh, stamp. This again, is not, uh, the same as an issuance of a building permit and it just constitutes a transfer of land from one lot to another. Um, if an owner wishes to build on that land, they have to go through all the applicable zoning and building requirements, including if, if required, an application for a special permit. Again, this is not a discretionary per, pro, process. If applicant submits a plan that meets all the rules and requirements, we are required by statute to endorse the plan as approval not required. So with that, Joe, I'll turn it back over to you. Do you wanna pull up the plan? Uh, my understanding from reviewing the documentation is that this is a materially similar plan to the one that's already been endorsed by the board.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a similar plan that's already been endorsed by the board, but it was done from scratch, uh, by Paul Bishonda. Uh, went out there, did his own measurements, his own survey, uh, and drew his own plan, um, and, uh, my client hired him to do that. Um, it's our contention, uh, that, uh, we meet all the criteria, uh, as you, uh, perfectly laid out.
Joe, you might, you might pulling it up just for reference for.
Oh, absolutely.
May not be as familiar.
If, uh, Mr. Bishonda can pull it up, if that's possible.
Yeah, I can do that. Can I share my screen?
Yes.
Anyone see that?
Uh, we're seeing a, uh, your store and go screen.
Okay, it says, uh, should be on there, she's sharing.
I think you just have to click the A and R plan.
Yeah, I did. I'm looking at it right now.
There you go.
There you go.
So, as, as shown by the plan, there are three lots, lot eleven, twelve and thirteen. Uh, and all lots have frontage on Salem Street. Uh, and, uh, there is access, uh, to, uh, lot eleven directly to the street. Uh, and lot twelve and thirteen have access, uh, to the, uh, Salem Street, uh, through a common driveway, uh, which is sufficient under the case of Fox versus Planning Board of Milton, twenty-four Mass App Court, five seventy-two, nineteen eighty-seven, uh, to provide, um, uh, access, um, for, uh, the requirements for an A and R plan. Uh, so we believe we meet all the criteria and under the statute, uh, that the board, uh, should, um, in, endorse the plan as submitted.
Any members of the planning board have any questions or comments related to this plan?
Uh, I do. Some of the requirements of, uh, of this board is to show monumentation of what was used to establish the lot lines out here. Um, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing one monument on here. So I'm kinda curious of how this plan was put together. Um, can you explain what was used and why it's not shown?
No, we defer to Mr. Bishonda on that, if, 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 uh, please, it's the board.
Okay, can I, everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
There are a number of monuments, there's an iron, iron rod set in the corner. If you see my cursor right here, another one over here. Um, I mean, there are monuments all over the place. I don't know, well, what you didn't see, but they are, if you look at the plan, um, there's an iron rod set at every, every, um, what, turning point on the entire.
They, they, they all say to be set, doesn't say set.
Right, right.
So.
Also, stone, if you look, if you look to the, um, to, we're getting this little smaller look at here. There's, see this stone bound found here?
Yep.
There's, there's one, one spot there. Uh, let's see. Sure, there's, there's gotta be several of them, cause my survey always does that, but. Spin around. It's just kinda hard to do in this, this Zoom format here. Oops, sorry. Yeah, don't get that one, there's that one bound there, but I'm sure, I'm sure that they're tied into at least three, three other points, but I don't have it on at this, on this view apparently. But there was a certification from the land surveyor on the plan. But, yeah.
All right, so, so you've got one monument on here.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there was more than one. I just, maybe, maybe it's, it's out of the view of the plan. I don't know, but we have all the records and plans. My surveyor can provide that. Why is that a problem? We have two registered lands surveyors, you know, and they can provide that for you, not, not an issue.
Well, but part of the requirement of the regulations for subdivisions in Massachusetts and, and A and Rs is that the, and for recording of a plan is that it can be reproducible on the ground by someone else. I don't see that this plan can be reproduced by someone else from the information shown on here. Do you, do you believe that this plan would not would, would pass muster if it was brought before the board to see if it complied?
Oh, I'm sure it'd be, be recorded. I mean, uh, if there's other, if there's other tie information that's on, on the plan that could be added, I just don't, uh, you know, I'm not the registered lands surveyor. We have registered lands surveyors that work with us and, um, you know, I'm sure they tied in. They, they're probably outside the view. Maybe there should be a note in the plan. I don't know. I'd have to look at it in more detail, but.
Okay.
They definitely should have it from scratch, from, from very beginning to the end.
Um, you keep saying that this plan was done from scratch and, you know, I, I was comparing it to the previous plan and it looks awful similar to the previous plan, except the fonts have changed on everything. So, um, that was, so that's one of my.
that was, so that's one of my questions is what, what was used to construct this plan? It really should be shown on here. Uh, one of the other requirements is that um you show offsets from all the buildings. They're not shown. So to me, I don't think this plan complies with well, the board's rules and regulations. Okay, if I can correct, if I can just comment on that, there's a building to remain. And then offsets are given to that building, the one to remain. The other buildings are being raised. So that's the difference. There are offsets to the one building that's been remaining. There's one, two, three, four offsets. Okay, but according to the board's rules and regulations, it says offsets shall be shown perpendicular to the lot lines to all the existing buildings. Doesn't say anywhere unless they're gonna be removed. What, what um am I asking? What regulation are you referring to? It's physical plan regulation or you're referring to full not required regulation? I don't have the documents for me. The, the A and R rules and regulations. We'll be happy to And this is, this is one of my, as other people on this Zoom meeting know. This is one of my pet peeves. We have rules and regulations that we enacted and constantly they're not being followed. So it doesn't say anywhere unless a building's gonna be removed that you don't need to do something. So to me, this plan needs some work. Okay, I'll, I'll take your word for it that the regulations say that, and if they in fact do, we will add those to the plan. That's not a problem. We apologize for not being there to begin with. Okay, so on the original plans of record for these, for these lots and I I went back and looked at the original documents for this. It shows walls along the lot lines along the normally portion uh, of the lots. Are those to be remain? Are they gonna be remaining or are they gonna be removed? Which, which uh, walls you're talking, referring to? Well, they're not shown on this plan, but there are walls. Um, if you pan up to the top. There, according to the former recorded plans, there are walls along there. The previous plan that this board endorsed showed a drill hole um, on that corner right above the woodshed. Um, but now you're saying it's gonna be iron rods set, so I don't know if the walls are gonna be removed and then you're gonna set iron rods afterwards or, or how this is gonna play out, but to me, there's just a lot of stuff on here that, that looks like it was hastily drawn up. Well, I apologize for that, but um, we will certainly look into the net wall. So uh, a- at this point, I, I am not comfortable endorsing this plan, and I think it should be uh, rejected because it does not comply with our rules and regulations. That's, that's my opinion.
And Matt, for a point of uh, point of clarification, if a plan is rejected, is there, I'm trying to remember, is there a cool off period for an A and R as it relates to the resubmission versus having the applicant withdraw?
It, it would probably best if they just withdraw at this point and resubmit uh, a plan that would comply.
We, we will do that as Joe Brodigan talking. We will withdraw at this point and resubmit with a uh, plan that complies.
Alright, I, I suggest that um, the board's rules and regulations be read through and make sure everything's ad- adhered to.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, so in that case, if the applicant is going to be withdrawing this plan, uh, we will move on to the next order of business unless Joe, there's anything else that you would like to, to discuss?
Nope, all set. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Paul, can you please stop uh, sharing your screen so we can move on to the next item? Uh, so that was item number four. Item number five on the agenda is one ninety seven Nahat Street, review surety bond. Uh, Sam, you asked for this to be added to the agenda, so I'm gonna uh, push, push this one over to you.
Yeah, um, so it, it wasn't um, something that we had any records up in the file, at least that I could find, and so it needed to go through um, the planning board to um, just accept the review and accept the surety bonds that they can start moving forward. Um, as a quick update, they have um, talked to uh, engineering and got all they got the estimate for the road and everything, and that's what the surety bond is based off of. Um, I believe that that is included in the scan that was sent over. Um yeah, that was all included. It's the one that's titled, entitled scan. Uh, and then um, they've also filed their HOA that is recorded with the Registry of Deeds um, for Middlesex, uh, which was one of their conditions prior to moving forward with the sale or any um, development on the site.
So Sam, I think I missed, what's the uh, the required action that the board needs to, to take on this?
You need to accept the surety bond as far as I understand. Um for what they've submitted, so like I said, so that they can go forward because they're, they're choosing to do the security or I mean, the um, the, the surety bond versus um, the other I have to look up the word. I wanna make sure I'm not misspeaking, but uh, does that make sense or am I not? Not making sense.
Uh, I'm just pulling up the last.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, thank you.
I believe in pass and, and Mel Lowery, you might remember when we had the situation before, I believe we just noted it in the meeting minutes that we accepted it and it wasn't a vote, it wasn't a motion, it was just like, yes, the planning board has acknowledged and received. Does that, does that sound right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, it's not, a vote's really not necessary, but we need to make sure it's been accepted, but you know, noted by the board that it is in effect. I think this is more something with engineering that they're gonna hold once they go through and do their inspections. And making sure it's constructed properly. So am I, did this, this um, firm buy both lots out there or one lot? Do we know what was, what was sold?
Um, there, they have the whole, as far as I know right now, there's, there's the, the larger development and they're working on selling off one lot last I heard. Um, I don't know the ins and outs of, of it in, in detail. Um, but they in order to do anything, had to establish their HOA and have that filed. And so that part was done. The other part is getting the road done. One of the other, I think there were thirty five conditions on this particular decision, um, if I remember correctly. And one of the other ones was getting the road uh, project started so they can do the the road two different ways, either by deposit or the surety bond. Um, and so that's the component that's in front of you, um, so that they can move forward. Um, but yes, last I heard, it was just one lot that they were talking about. Um
Okay, uh, it's, it's just, it's a two lot. Basically, it's a two lot subdivision, so I wasn't sure if they just purchased the one lot and they're building a road to access that or if they purchased both of them. So that, that was my only question on that.
I believe that this was the one where the, the uh, the current landowner subdividing it and selling the other section that was closer to Salem Street while he remained in his primary residence.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
So in that case, if that's, if the case is that we don't have that, there's no additional action, then I think we just add to the meeting minutes that we've uh received and accepted, or just received the surety bond associated with one ninety seven and we can move on.
Yep.
Okay, so in that case, I will pivot to item number six, so the open meeting complaint. So the attorney general issued a response to the open meeting complaint that was lodged against the planning board and responded on behalf of the town by Tom Mullen. And the conclusion of the attorney general, I will read uh, as such. So for the reasons stated above, we find that the planning board violated the open meeting law when a forum deliberated outside the posted meeting about the original overlay district and the minimum map. We order the board to public, publicly release uh of this determination, all emails of any board member to one or other board members which reference the minimum map and plans to amend Article seventeen prior to spring town meeting, to the extent it has not done so already. The board may publicly release emails by reading their content during a meeting and listing the emails in the meeting minutes or by referencing the emails during a meeting and posting the emails along with the meetings on the municipal website. We also order the board's immediate and future compliance with open meeting law requirements and caution, future similar violations may be considered evidence of intent to violate the law. So I discussed with attorney Mullen after, after the issuance of this and so uh, the, and we're gonna be requesting all members of the planning board send uh, any emails associated with the deliberations of, of uh, alternative minimum map with the three A MBTA Communities Act uh, before the spring town meeting to Susan and will be uh including all of those emails as well as a copy of this decision as part of the meeting minutes associated with this meeting. Um, Susan, another thing, I um, a concerned citizen reached out and made a comment that the, the oh, the agenda item was too vague and I think that, that they're right, so I'd like to amend when we send these meeting minutes that the uh, agenda item uh, says a um, uh, open meeting law uh, complaint violation and uh, and explicitly uh, referenced uh the alternative minimum map um, in order to make sure that it's as clear as possible. And then we'll include a copy of the finding from the attorney general as well as the um, response from Tom Mullen, the original complaint and all of the emails set forth by the attorney general um, being referenced. So Susan, we can take it offline if you have any questions regarding what is required. Um and then we can uh, make sure that we're ins- uh, ensuring compliance, so. Um, with regards to the, the, to the item in uh comment as it relates to the violations itself, I think everyone uh, was attempting to uh, or no one was intending to buy the open meeting law, but obviously the attorney general disagreed and uh, set forth why they disagreed. So I think as a reminder to the board, just making sure that the, I think the nuance was that the uh, members of the board were found to be uh in knowledge of what other members of the board felt about a particular topic, and so that's what constituted the open meeting violation. So just a reminder to make sure that not even just uh, correspondence email about items, not making sure that not more than three members of the board are on any individual emails, but also even taking emails from other members and having separate email threads. If there's any discussion of the same topic where one board member knows what other board members think about an item that's before, before the board, that constitutes a violation of open meeting law. So reminder to everyone, uh, we'll, we'll have the emails released and then the attorney general uh, just to note that they consider this matter closed. Any member of the boards have any questions regarding what's required?
So we should just forward any email that we sent or received because Susan's potentially gonna get multiples of the same email if it was sent to couple times. So are, are we just forwarding any emails that we sent or any emails that we sent and received?
Uh, any emails that we sent regarding the alternative minimum map to any other member of the board?
Alright.
And the um, okay, no, I, I, I'm with you. I, I understand uh, the, the time period as well.
Any other questions regarding, regarding the violation?
Would you prefer PDFs of, of each one? Or PDFs of the email chains or?
Uh, I'll defer to Susan. What would be the preferred method?
It doesn't make a difference to me. I'm just compiled and put them all together.
Okay, uh, in that case, I will move on to item number seven, items not anticipated by the chair. Uh, any members of the planning board have any items that they wish to bring up? Sam, you've got a couple items.
Yeah, I have a couple of different things I wanted to share some info on. Um, I think y'all had asked about ADUs a little while back and what the status was and how the um uh, that would impact uh, Wakefield, and so we, we have until February technically to have that um
Ken, can you, can you back up for members of the board who weren't part of that correspondence between yourself and myself? The background regarding what, what changed ADU uh, statute from the state?
The state passed uh, something called the Affordable Homes Act, and in it, it required that all municipalities within the state of Massachusetts allow ADUs in single-family zoning districts by right. Um, there are some limitations on square footage, um, and that you're only allowed like one allowed by right, only one on your property. You could potentially be allowed more by a special apartment, but there's not really there's not a lot of clarification. Um, E O H L C is supposed to be working on some guidelines, that's the story. Um, but we haven't, I have not received them yet. Um, so I sat in on one of the first legal webinars that they did, uh, E O H L C, the state um, with the Barrett Group, and they discussed two key things that need to happen is um, one, most of this, like I said, won't happen until February twenty twenty five, so we have time um, to start working on thinking about how that wants, how we want to be proposing something. I'm happy to just put something together.
When, my, that February twenty twenty five date that you're referencing, is that
Yes.
when something would theoretically need to be in effect, or is that?
Technically, the the law goes into effect for ADUs in February twenty twenty five, yes. So, um again, we still haven't gotten guidelines on how this is gonna play out, so it's not there's only so much we can do without guidelines. Um, so unfortunately, even if you wanted to try to get something to move forward um, we just, we aren't in that place quite yet. What we can do is look at definitions um and see if our definition is uh, compliant with the state definition. That's something that does need to be updated sooner than later. Um, but that's the only tangible, uh, I guess, component that we can actually start looking at the other pieces. It, it's really still just a lot of moving parts and not uh, no, we don't have very clear guidelines yet on, on what will be happening with that. Um, that's number one. For two MBTA communities, um, I, I don't know if you all have been following along in um town councils subcommittee for MBTA communities. Um, they are currently anticipating going forward to fall town meeting, which was just set for November sixteenth. Um, so at some point, prior to town meeting, um, you'll be uh, forwarded in theory, the, the maps and the bylaws, um, provided again that they are still anticipating going forward at fall town meeting um, for your review. Uh, we don't have all of that finalized yet, um, but I will keep you updated once I know more. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask about is
Before, before we move on for the three A, do we understand when just for my own purposes of our meetings, do we have a sense of when they would anticipate coming before and would the uh, subcommittee uh, anticipate multiple public hearings prior to town meeting?
Multiple public hearings through planning board public hearings?
Correct.
Um, I, I don't Um, I, I don't know, I, I don't have a clear, just because there, we have maps that are going to be reviewed. Um, based off of survey and public forum that will be reviewed on the meeting. In, in eight days on the eighteenth, um, from there, I'll be able to have a little bit more of a definitive. Uh, timeline, because we'll then be able to start working on really. Uh, putting the bylaw together and confirming that these are, in fact, the districts that they wanna go forward with, um. I am at the mercy of all these different little moving components of it, so like I said, unfortunately, I wish I had a clearer answer for you. But we're gonna do the best we can to get it passed along, um, for subsequent parties to review prior to. Town meeting, um, whenever it does go forward.
Yeah, just let me, just let me, keep me up to date on that, just because.
Yep.
I anticipate that if, I anticipate that regardless if it's one or two, I anticipate those will be. Uh, relatively long sessions with lots of debate, so I wanna make sure that if the, if we have one of those. We have other business that we don't, that we're, we're cards of other people's time.
Totally, um, as soon as I know more, um, I will follow up with you after the next meeting and. Let you know at least where, where we are in that process. Um, one of the other things I wanted to catch up on, uh, or update you on is the potential of hybrid meetings. Um, you had asked about that, and there is potential for hybrid meetings to be taking place. So if that's something you want me to work on. Coordinating and scheduling, um, I can figure out what exactly what room we'd be able to utilize and. Um, if it's available for the dates that we have upcoming meetings, uh, and, and work on that, I think that it would be. Pretty crucial to have it in a consistent location versus popping between different rooms. Um, so I feel like at least for this year, it, it might, I, I can't guarantee that it would be available, obviously through the rest of the year. Um, but I can work to uh, secure a space at least for, for next year. Um, hopefully other people haven't gotten their calendars, um, too booked, anyway. Uh, so that was one thing, the other thing is I'm working on updating the planning department website, or actually just setting it up, cuz it didn't exist before me. Um, and if you have any. Problems that you run into, any questions, tips, uh, information that you'd like to have out there. Um, obviously, you, you have your website, but from, from my side of trying to make sure that there's also really great accessibility to the different applications. And I'm trying to look at putting together some updated checklist and possibly even a matrix, uh, to try to help. Better organize that, um, feel free to send me ideas via email, um. Is just one thing that I'm gonna be hopefully having updated, um, by the end of the year. But there's also the Housing Production Plan that is just getting underway, um, as well as the Housing Trust is working on a program for. Uh, rental deposit assistance, and then again, MBTA Communities is getting updated, so, um. If you'd like to, feel free to come join me on any of my other meetings. You're always, always welcome for commentary, um, but please do send me any, um, questions, suggestions, tips. Um, cri- criticisms, critiques of website information, um, so I can work on, on getting that updated.
Um, I, I, before we move on, I, I do wanna ask the other members of the board, I, I think I know the answer based on their previous conversations, but. Are other members of the board interested in getting that hybrid setup, even if it was to commence, you know, call it January first of twenty five? On some regular cadence?
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
So, I think, I think overwhelming that our board's variation in getting that type of setup.
Good, Sam could ask, how many rooms are set up for, um, hybrid meetings?
I think there's, I, I know there's at least one, um, there might be two or three, but I can't. I, I don't wanna speak until I have confirmation of which ones are available for regular cadence as well. Um, the one at the Public Safety Building, uh, was utilized for the MBTA Communities. Public Forum, which was hybrid, and that worked okay, um. It's, it's a lot of little moving pieces for somebody to be able to be present, present and deal with the waiting room, um, and everything on Zoom. But it does work, um, and my laptop is already set to go, it's already all hooked up and I know that it works. Um, so that's one of them, I just don't, I wanna confirm, like I said, the dates, um, and I don't know if. The spaces at Town Hall, um, are also ones, there's the two conference rooms, although the one on the second floor is a lot harder for people to find. And it's not quite as big, um, the first floor, I believe does hybrid, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I wanna double check, um, how that gets set up, and if that would be the room that we could look at utilizing regularly or the Public Safety Building. Um, again, so I just have to work on following up on that.
Alright, I, I know the, the upstairs conference room, um, we do the Housing Trust hybrid on that, and it's difficult because.
Yeah.
A camera at the end of a long table and it's hard to hear and see. The people at the other end of the, of the table, so I don't think that would be ideal for the planning board. I, I would hope that they've got the normal meeting room set up for a hybrid with something that. Works decently, um, but uh. I, I do wanna go back to, you know, in person with hybrid. But I don't want to do it just for the sake of doing it and not having the public get any benefit out of it, so. So, again, I, I wanna, I wanna go back to, to, you know, I wanna definitely do that. Have the board in live meetings with the public's participation, but only if it's gonna be beneficial to everyone involved.
Right, I totally understand, and like I said too, I wanna make sure that we're meeting in a consistent place, so it's not bouncing all over the place, um. Unless there's like a, a one-off situation where we have to move to someplace different, um, so I am happy to look and see what's available. Um, on a, on a regular cadence, and then I can report that back, um. Either via BCC email and or at the next meeting.
I think just waiting till the next meeting is totally fine.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anything else, Sam, and uh, that you have as, uh, for items unanticipated?
Um, not, not that I can see, I have my little, yeah, it's all blurred out, sorry. Um, that's the, that's the only big thing, um. That, that's going, or those are, that list of things, um, are the, the bigger things, and if there's anything else that comes up for the next meeting, I'll try to, um. Offer some of this information, especially on ADUs, I'll try to have it explicitly spelled out, um, on the agenda so that people are aware that that may be. Discussed in slightly more detail.
Okay, uh, any other members of the planning board have items unanticipated?
No, I, I, I will just say, um, thank you to Sam and uh, getting the, the Housing Production Plan process underway. Uh, the first meeting is uh, tomorrow night.
Great, um, I had one item that I wanted to make sure that we, we talked about, related to the Town Day. So we did get confirmation that September twenty first on the Saturday that. Uh, booth is available for us to, to utilize, probably what we discussed, uh, two, three meetings ago. Um, in terms of content and or attendance at said booth. Does, is there anyone who's raising their hands and I, I remember, I think Theo, did you say that you were? Ready, willing and able to, to attend for that?
Yeah, I, I have a wedding, uh, to go to that day, so I'm not available, so. I would like, I would love to help, uh, plan it though, if. Be some level of assistance to someone.
Was there anyone else who was, uh, who's, again, it's, um, September twenty first from one to four?
I have a commitment that day also, so I'm, I'm not available.
I am out of town that day also, but also helpful preparation in terms of content, if there's something we do wanna put together.
Now, we've, um, just to speak about it too, we've had some planning meetings for the Safe Streets Group and. We're offering a bike valet and working on the rodeo, and, um, I've been preparing. Help from, prepare for that, um, I am also not available on the afternoon, I am in the morning to help set up, but not in the afternoon. Unfortunately, I know that's kinda tough, but it's, um. I'm not sure what, um, Jim, what were you thinking the planning board would have at Town Meeting?
I, I.
I'm at Town Day.
I'm just following everyone else's guidance to go get a table, so I don't, I don't have, I never was. I've never attended, uh, um, as part of a member of the planning board, so I don't have a strong.
Well, I would make a suggestion, and Sam, maybe this is something you could talk to Aaron about, or the other board chairs. That, um, there's a combination, so if I remember correctly, was it the ZBA and? The planning board together in the same tent, and that helped to staff it, um, or do we have? The Conservation Commission, the planning board, like, do we have all the boards under one tent, and there's just people there that can? That can help support, um, we also at the time had liaisons from the Town Council. That were also available to support and be part of that, and I'm not sure that's something that we have anymore. So again, the idea that, do we co- um, look for a combination of, here's a tent of. Town boards that work on the planning and developing and approval of. Conservation, um, planning and ZBA. I don't know if that's something that is more viable than just having a tent for each.
Yeah, um, when we did Town Day, um, you know, uh, the ZBA and Planning Board were at the same table. And that, that was a nice, uh, discussion, cuz people came up and asked questions about both and. Yeah, I think Conservation Commission was right next door, so that, that worked out nicely, um, and similarly in like the. Um, the Wakefield one-on-one things for, for new residents, um, it, that was, that was useful to have the, the two together. So, um, would it, would it work to have? Um, stuff from, well, I don't know, the planning department there, like, you know, it, it was easy to. To talk up the master plan when we did it at Town Day, um.
So I actually have my own table, um, I'm. I'm doing tabling, um, just to answer questions about MBTA Communities, um, and other. Things that are going on around town, I'm sure people ask me about ADUs, um. I'm going to try to put together some activities, um, for kids. I don't know exactly what those are yet, I have meetings every night this week that I've been prepping for, um. So it was something I was planning on working on this week, um, but I have a handful of different ideas, there's. I mean, that's, it's always a way you can at least get people to engage, um. There are a variety of different, even activities for adults, just looking at your community and. Understanding some components, I mean, you can even make it similar to. Uh, like a, I don't know, like info session is quite the right word, but just kinda giving people a background of, here's what we actually do. And then, um, again, you can always include an activity for kids, cuz it'll get more people out, uh, typically, but it's. I, I, we can't combine them, I asked Aaron that, um, just because I'll be answering questions with. MBTA Communities and some of the other things that are going on with different organizations in the Housing Production Plan, um. That she advised keeping at least the board separate from the department, just based on topics, since I'm not. Regulating or, or showing up in a regulatory capacity as much as like, uh, plans and projects kind of capacity.
So, in the, and I, 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 in the past, other members of the board, what, um. What have we actually presented or had, as a really, as you know, as part of that? Town Day?
Aaron, Aaron has a really big, uh, foam board map of the town, so people liked looking at that, um. We did a, um, a bunch of post-it notes for people to put on a separate board, things they, they like about the town, and that, that was pretty. Uh, that, that was useful and engaging, and it was also engaging for kids, cuz they wanted to write stuff too, um. That's, uh, there's two, um, two soft things, um.
Were, were those things, things that needed to be staffed, for lack of a better term, or were they things that could be? Unfortunately, I have another commitment as well, I'm not available to go man this, so.
Right.
The other question is, do we? Do we have a table, or do we just, uh? Uh, forego set a table?
I, it sounds like we need to just forego having a table this, this year, because.
Yeah.
You, we need, if you're gonna have something from the planning board, you should have someone there. You can explain what the planning board does and doesn't do, more importantly. Um, so just having information for someone to pick up, I, I don't think it's gonna be useful. Um, in. Getting the message of what the board actually does across to people.
Yeah, I actually, I actually asked, um, sitting up, sitting around a fire with some of the people from the town and. Um, what would you wanna see at Town Day from the planning board, and the option of a dunk tank, tank came up. So, I don't know if that's something. Sam, you know, not that you have to do that, but I, I think if we had a dunk tank, maybe we could raise a lot of money.
Tell you, they're very cold, I have done them before, they're very, very cold, cuz they're filled with like. Typically, um, hose water.
Yep.
Yeah, well, regardless, I'll, I'll email of, uh, the organizers and let them know that we'll be foregoing a table this year. Um, any other items unanticipated by the chair, by any other members of the, the board? Okay, in that case, uh, anyone?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second, there you go.
Alright.
Motion by Matt, who's got a second?
Second.
Second by Bill, uh, motion to adjourn, uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yep.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you everyone for the, for the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.